First on the agenda is Admin Matters and I will be circulating this around. It is a sign up sheet for the annual VSBA convention in Reimsburg on November 14th, 15th, and 16th. So just check if you are planning to attend. If you sign up to attend, please know that there will be a fee paid to VSBA and we're not able to get a refund if you don't attend. So therefore, we ask that you please be sure that you're able to attend before you sign up to go. We'll start it this way. I'd also like to remind my colleagues and any employee in the division that may be watching that our open enrollment for benefits is now in progress and you must elect or reelect your benefits through the Benefit Focus platform during the open enrollment period to have coverage in 2019. The window for enrollment or re-enrollment ends on October 24th, so if you haven't gone online to elect or reelect your benefits, now's the time to do so. We do not have a closed session tonight this evening and I'm going to open this up. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to share during Admin Matters quickly?
Yes, I'd like to share visiting Lanstown High School on October 3rd and in revisiting or celebrating Hispanic Month. The students were there in the display with machada vida dancing. And I'd just like to say that Chair Anderson looked good on the stage participating in the dancing.
Don't share the video, whatever you do.
So I became the official photographer and videoed everything, but it was really nice and it showcased the history of all that took place of that dance. It was really exciting. And this was celebrating Hispanic Historic Month.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. Rye?
Yes, so Virginia Beach Casa, court appointed special advocate, had a debut celebration for a new grant from the Hampton Roads Community Foundation to the tune of $150,000. And it's for our older foster youth, so to bridge that gap. So we all have a vested interest in that, given that many of these are our students. I thought nothing suggests more the need for this than the glaring statistic that less than 3% of foster children will wind up with a college degree. So looking forward to the ways that our division can continue to partner with both human services, you know, Virginia Beach Human Services and the Juvenile and Domestic Relations Court in that regard. And my other quick note is a group that's developed in the last year. Mila Carr is the founder. Belle du Monde is the name of the dance group and it's been developed to instill cultural awareness and diversity through dance. And this program was held at Chrysler Museum. It would celebrate Puerto Rican culture and a number of our dance teachers and dance students were present and that's why I mentioned it as well.
Thank you. Mrs. Rigs?
I just wanted to mention that I visited last week the Business Entrepreneurship Academy. Actually, I visited the school, because it was one of my schools. And so I was there during their faculty meeting and just welcomed them and just, you know, said a couple of words. But then Megan took me around to their newly renovated and almost ready, but you know, they have some stuff to do, but it looked really good. And so I wanted to tell you guys how much progress they've made and it looks really great. So they're doing such great things over there.
Thank you. Is anyone else?
Yes. Yeah, I was able to speak to four second grade classes in regard to civics and voting and all that stuff. And so they had some great questions. We took a month vote on PE in recess and it was overwhelming that the second graders wanted PE and recess separated. So I told them I would pass that on. And then they had great questions and then they had some really, really funny questions like if the President of the United States is sick and Miss Williams, would you take his place? So I had to explain the hierarchy. Then it went to, well, if the President and Vice President's sick and then if the superintendent's sick and our principal's sick, what do we do? So it was very interesting, very fun, but they knew a lot of, they knew more than you would think they knew about voting and all that stuff. So thank you to the second graders and Hermitage Elementary for inviting me.
Good. All right, anyone else? All right, Dr. Spence, we are ready for our first workshop presentation this afternoon.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. We're going to jump right in for time's sake and update the board on the Scratch Cooking Initiative that's coming out of the Office of Food Services and I think we've got John Smith here to pick us up.
Good evening, Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chairman McDonald, School Board members, and Superintendent Aaron Spence. I'm John Smith, Director of Food Services, and I'm very excited to stand before you to share the multitude of ways that we are taking the division's food services program to a whole new level. Specifically for today's presentation, I'll focus on our newest initiative, Scratch Cooking. But first, I have to pause and credit our entire food service team, from the kitchen staffs to nutritionists, financial assistants, and everyone for the remarkable job they've been doing each and every day. We serve 8.6 million meals each year. This works out to almost 50,000 meals per day. Something that most people don't think about when they think of Virginia Beach, 39% of our students are economically disadvantaged, meaning they qualify for free reduced meals. And that number has increased by 10% in almost 10 years, from 29.1% in 2008 and '09 to 39.7% in '17 and '18. These numbers are collected each October, so we don't have this year's percentage yet. Each meal we serve also has to meet very strict USDA nutritional guidelines according to the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act of 2010, which called for school meals to increase fruits, vegetables, and whole grains, as well as establish sodium and caloric restrictions. And we do this for only $2.85 a meal, 40 cents for reduced lunch prices, or for free. The Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act does require that school divisions raise prices each year to keep up with higher costs of healthier food. However, we did not raise prices this year. Instead, we absorbed those increases through our operational funds, which I'll share later in this presentation. We're also very proud that we've been able to maintain these prices, given the food services self-funded. This includes payroll, benefits, and retirement for all our food service employees. Having said that, we've been able to launch a number of initiatives in the past five years. We've expanded our breakfast programs. From last year, we serve breakfast in the classroom at all levels and offer breakfast after the bell at the high school level. We did this to give students a nutritious start to the day so they could focus on learning and not hunger. We worked with Eat Building Principal to offer a breakfast model that best meets the needs of the school, whether it be breakfast carts or breakfast in the cafeteria. As a result, in 2016, 2017, we increased our breakfast numbers by 350,000 meals. In a year, we now serve 2.9 million breakfast meals. You may recall this garnered attention from then First Lady Virginia Dorothy McCullough, as well as First Lady Pam Northland. At our Title I schools, we no longer just offer after-school snacks, which might have been a juice and a fruit roll-up. Instead, we now offer students a full supper. Granted, it's not a 10-course meal, but it's something we did because we knew it might be the only meal that child had that night. Parents can now also manage their child's cafeteria account through School Cafe. Their families can make payments, submit free meal applications, view their child's purchase history, review low balance alerts, and view nutritional content of items. School Cafe also has a Vopal app, so parents can access the same information anywhere, We're now also participating in USDA's Community Eligibility Provision Program, which means that if a school has a high number of students who are directly certified as eligible for free reduced lunch by state agencies, we can offer free reduced meals to all enrolled students without having parents complete individual applications. We expanded our summer meals program from three sites three years ago to 30 sites this year. We now serve 55,000-plus meals during the summer that are reimbursed by the USDA. This program offers free meals at our Title I schools at no cost to any child up to age 18. This also garnered natural media coverage. And I have to mention limited time offers because one of the division's initiatives is to give students voice. Before fully launching food items into our menus, we field tested at limited time one meals to see if students liked them. Those items are big sellers, meaning kids like them, then we make them part of our menus. Some LTOs have been calzones, grilled cheese sandwiches with tomato soup, and even buffalo Our next undertaking is our Scratch Cooking Initiative. We're going to be cooking a lot of great foods that kids love, but in even healthier way that still meets all USDA nutritional standards. Last year, we piloted Scratch Cooking at Old Nation School, which is very well received by the students. Now we plan to take this to Division One. It's a huge undertaking for a school division our size. To lead this effort, we hired a district chef, a lead cook, and a lead baker. Our district chef is Kip Poole, a Virginia Tech Restaurant Management graduate, who also has a master's degree in education and was head chef or manager of many notable Hampton Roads restaurants. Most recently, he worked at a Title I high school in Delaware where he grew a culinary program from scratch that attracted the attention of the Food Network and landed him and his then students on Guy's Grocery Games. Chef Poole is here and I wanted to introduce him to you.
He laughed because you saw her.
I love that show.
It's not very good. I've never really had a time limit, but I know how important these meetings are, so I'll get kind of right to it. I'm very excited to be here and thank you for having myself and our students and Rachel Thompson from ODS. We're going to be making foods that the students really kind of want to see and that are a lot healthier for them. We've already started doing this and we've started doing this by having them help us do this. Some of the items that we've already seen in our kitchens is chicken ramen dishes. We are doing homemade sauces of like mac and cheese. We're also doing rice bowls. We've launched a Fiesta Bowl. So we're just looking at rice, vegetables, very good hearty food, very good visibly on the eye. And we are already seeing the numbers go up in ODS schools and Lanstown because they're really seeing like the creativity backbone of it. So we brought three students today and they are going to talk a little bit about what they've done and to kind of pump this initiative up, but super excited to do it and we've got a lot to do, but we've got a lot of changes to make and they're all, you know, on a very good end right now. Yeah, please.
Okay, so I'm Rachel Thompson and I'm actually the department chair for the Health and PE.
Move over.
For Health and PE Department at Old Nation School and last year with the Scratch Cooking Initiative. I saw that opportunity to bring the classroom to the kitchen and the kitchen to the classroom. And nutrition is a huge piece of the health curriculum and I wanted to give a hands-on curriculum to our students and that was the perfect opportunity for it. They are actually going to explain their experience. They are the experts, so I'm actually going to turn it over to them. We have Zoe Moreland, Vikram Kohli, and Carson Bullis and they are the experts, so listen to them.
So while the more obvious-
Can you move over, please?
To the behind podium, please. Thank you.
So while the more obvious advantages of the Top Chef Challenge were collaboration and responsibility, the greatest advantage for us was the expansion of our food knowledge. The challenge allowed us to comprehend how the food affects our bodies from a nutritional standpoint. This was through the requirements and the challenge to create a dish that was within the average calorie count and that encompassed all five food groups. And so that's why Scratch Cooking expanded our knowledge of food, but also caused us to make choices, better choices about the food that we eat.
Excellent.
Throughout my Top Chef experience, I learned a lot about successfully selling a product and getting consumers to be interested in it. We had to advertise in a way that drew customers in and didn't mislead them with any false information. That's a skill that's used in a lot of business and economic jobs. Additionally, it helped me cooperate with people that weren't usually my number one choice for group projects. All of our strengths and creative ideas combined to make the perfect group. Thank you.
All right, so in my experience, the Top Chef competition has been a great initiative to showcase the hard work that's put into scratch lunches at school and also interest students who may never have bought school lunch before into supporting their friends and fellow scholars who are serving their Top Chef meals in the cafeteria. And I'm really positive that it will lead students to buy lunch, as it led me to buy school lunch daily. And after receiving criticism at the community expo where my team presented our recipe, we were really eager to further collaborate and improve our recipe when we served it to the school and that required a lot of hard work and dedication. And for these reasons, we believe that the Scratch Cooking should continue and expand to change the lives of students who are able to learn and grow from the more sustainable choices being made for school lunches.
Again, thank you for having us. A lot of fun stuff coming, so please ever reach out if you have any questions for us.
I just want to say that I visited Old Nation last year when they were still in the experimental stages and only doing it, I believe, on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. And so the Wednesday that I was there, they were actually serving homemade grilled cheese and tomato soup. And one of the things that totally impressed me on the whole matter was that the students were also keeping track of the amount of waste that students, you know, didn't eat. And so what they found was, and they'd already proven, they already had some data that showed that the waste was a lot less on days that they had Scratch Cooking, but on days that there wasn't Scratch Cooking, there was a lot more food waste that was being thrown away. And I was so impressed with that. I left that day thinking, this is the most awesome thing I've ever heard of. Let's just go back to the way it used to be back in the olden days when we did Scratch Cooking. Let's do this. So I'm very impressed with it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Now we have our lead team. Our Scratch Cooking goals for this year are: First, chef and his team are already developing a training program to teach kitchen staff the skills needed for Scratch Cooking, such as prepping ingredients, cooking techniques, baking, and different skills that go with this kind of food operation. Secondly, we're working on recipe development because meals have to be consistent across the school. We have to be able to verify to the USDA that our foods keep within nutritional standards. These are new items like the Fiesta Bowl, or best sellers that kids like. We might make fresh hamburgers or fresh baked bread, world's out there for us to take. Working out of Lanstown Elementary and Middle School kitchen for a couple of reasons. We're ready to pilot recipes that gives us an elementary and a middle school to work with. It's one of our highest meal volume schools in the division and it has a big kitchen. We'll also continue what we're doing at ODS and use it as a recipe development kitchen as well. What you'll see happen when we have a recipe that we're ready to test out, we will offer it as a limited time only, or LTO, or you can call it a chef's special, as we're doing next week with the Fiesta Bowl.
Yes, sir.
We're aiming to start with five to 10 elementary and middle schools next year and continue to add five schools each semester depending on the readiness of the staff. Who knows, perhaps we might surpass our plan and pilot at more schools, but we want to take it slow and make sure we're doing it right. I can't stress enough that success hinges on a well-trained staff and having recipes that are consistent across the division. To help support all these changes and to re-energize our kitchen staffs, we moved away from the old career ladder that had previously limited basically two types of positions, such as cafeteria assistant, floater, and cafeteria manager. There was limited advancement and the salaries resulted in high turnover. In July, we launched a new career ladder with a clearly delineated career path that is based on skills. These keeps with the skills that will be needed as part of the Scratch Cooking Initiative since we will need a more diversely skilled workforce. We'll need people to be cooks and bakers, as well as managers, and we'll train our own people to do these jobs. As far as salaries, we also increased them, which has already improved employee morale and hopefully will decrease turnover. Our staff is excited. In fact, we shared our vision at the kickoff this year. Our Scratch Cooking Initiative was received with positive accolades. Captain Manager John Arrojo, who comes from restaurant industry where he was doing a lot of Scratch Cooking, said he really likes the idea, particularly because of the good smells that get going in the kitchen. Imagine our cafeterias with the aromas of fresh baked bread or hamburgers. His colleague Bonnie Gaskin was excited to provide students home-cooked meals. Finally, I'm also happy to report that through all these new initiatives, that we've been able to reach solid financial footing. Net income, which is donated by the yellow line, is the money we make annually after all operating expenses are paid. The orange line is our ongoing fund balance. I think that is our savings account. The green line is the state allowable fund balance, something like a recommendation of what the school division should maintain for emergencies. The profit will likely decrease this upcoming year as we plan to purchase kitchen equipment, which is not cheap, provide our schools the right equipment they will need for this Scratch Cooking Initiative. We'll also be hiring additional lead staff to work with Chef Poole, but overall, the picture is good. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mrs. Felton?
I love the program. I spoke to students on my way in and they said they were going to be nervous, but they let them know they did really, really well and explained everything and enjoyed them as much. I hear you said you're going to be purchasing different items and I was wondering, are we considering purchasing locally vegetables and fruits in this project as well? And who and how?
We do a lot of that now. We go within a 400-mile radius. We have Department of Defense, $1.4 million worth of fresh fruit and vegetables. They try to maintain that diameter for us. A lot of it depends on what's in season. We brought in pumpkins, we bring in strawberries. We try to do that as much as we possibly can. And that's one of the things, once we get to stage one, that's one of chef's specialties and he'll be reaching out for more and more of that. But right now, we've really got to focus on these couple of big picture items and get those things solid.
Mr. Edwards?
One of the other hurdles that you faced late last year and this year has been one lunch. And the feedback I've gotten from the schools is that it's sort of settled out. People figured out when to eat and they are eating, but can you provide any detail or reaffirmation of what I've heard?
Well, I think you have to consider from our standpoint as an opportunity rather than something that is hurting us. We've got some great ideas going. We've been piloting it at several schools, especially at Green Run High School, to do a pre-ordering concept. We put out a four-item menu that the kids access in the morning before school on their Chromebooks and those orders go directly to the kitchen manager. They prep them and they can receive them at different locations. So we're hoping that as it catches on, will equal out and possibly even overtake what we were doing before. So it's a little early. We're not in any kind of panic mode on it, but I think something like that's got great potential. Even with half the one lunch was something we were looking at as a possibility to get more kids through the serving lines.
I like that positive approach. Ms. McLaught?
Thank you. I'm like Mrs. Felton, I'm totally on board. I remember in sixth grade, it was great because I was able, second graders were allowed to go and help in the kitchen when you went to Hope Elementary. So that was like a big deal and you got to get a co-camp, so that was very exciting. And I was actually, Ms. Anderson, when you mentioned the waste part of that, we had, and a few of us will remember Dick Laszlo was a great gentleman who was involved with an organization that some of us were in, and he volunteered at one of our elementary schools and I encouraged him to do that. And he eventually had to stop doing that because he was so heartbroken overseeing the amount of waste that goes out in the cafeteria. So anything we can do. And my one hesitancy is always that it's great to give them a foundation here, but I always worry, is it, how long is it going to stick? Are they going to throw it away because, you know, or are we, is it really, it's great that we're giving that chance to taste what a vegetable really, a fresh vegetable really tastes like versus the canned or that kind of thing. The questions I have are, you mentioned having to buy additional products, mixers, all of this kind of thing, the equipment. But what about modifications to the, because we've downsized over the years in what we had in our kitchens?
We've got a pretty good idea of what that will cost us in an elementary school, an older elementary school. And it really depends on what exactly we're going to need equipment-wise and that's really what we're trying to figure out at Lanstown. They're doing 1,500 meals a day out of that school. That's a big volume compared to about 250 at ODS. So we'll have a pretty good idea based on that, what we would need in each kitchen. And then we'll work with school plant facilities to kind of figure out what exactly we might need to upgrade.
So will that come through our CIP and all that kind of thing as far as, or through truly self-sustain, it's a self-sustained program because of the profits and reinvesting back into it?
We've looked at a couple. We actually did a study with facilities last year on 10 schools where it would be a partnership between the two, with us covering all the equipment, type of upgrades and that kind of thing. I think every school is going to be a little unique in what it needs.
Sure.
I think where we would provide help is doing things like rerouting electrical and some of that stuff that might need to be done. But we're looking for food services to take care of the equipment.
Okay. And the next question is, how are you going to choose which schools get to go next? Well, it's a big kindergarten question.
Well, we're doing with the training. We've put it out there to all the managers. We're getting them trained first because they need to be able to lead the charge. Then we're going to train our own people in-house. The chef has already started the first training cohort. And what we're going to try and do is get volunteers first that are interested in doing it.
The schools, you're asking the schools who would like to try it?
I plan on visiting the lead workshops a little later, probably later in November, when he's a little closer to recipe and will know when we'll have a better target date. And then we'll see what schools are interested and which ones get their people trained and then we'll take it from there.
We're really seeing a lot of excitement.
I think there would be. I would think there would be.
Sorry, I don't know where to stand. I laughed, I came back.
I don't know how to say this correctly, but I would hope.
Surprise. Sorry.
So I simply want to know, I would like us to go to a lower socioeconomic school as one of our next schools, very specifically. And my children went to ODS at the time and the camps thing. And I think it's wonderful in Lanstown, I know that they have a percentage of free and reduced, but I would love to go, the one of our next schools is at a very high percentage of that, to see how that's accepted because it's my opinion that you'll probably have to modify there even better possibly.
Yeah, absolutely.
So that would be my recommendation.
Well, when we roll, the next group will actually, it'll be a group, not just one school. We're planning on doing at least five in the fall. One of the recommendations is to give chef a team of trainers. Some of those will probably be hired out of Culinary Institute of Virginia or TCC's program like the three we just-
That'd be fantastic.
We've got four, one more, we're still interviewing for the fourth spot. If we can have a team of 10, they would go to each school, they would be on-site to assist, be their guide, train. So I think my request would be let us get through this semester and see how we start doing. And then we're going to attack it as the best that we can possibly attack it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. It's great.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes, I had two questions. I actually was going to ask something about one lunch. Do you have data like from September last year comparing it to September this year about, has one lunch, you know, greatly decreased amounts of food?
Well, I would not venture to really go out there yet because the schools were doing different models in the spring last year, so I don't really have much to compare it to September to September. And then you had a week of hurricane stuff. So it's not really comparing apples to apples. It's got to take some time for our online process to become acclimated, to become part of the culture. That's not going to happen overnight as kids start talking to friends. How did you get here so fast? I think that that kind of process will catch on and over the course of the year, I think we'll be back up to where we were. Are we there now? Now?
Okay, all right. And then also, I wanted to ask about breakfast. Two questions, one for each of you. Is this going to include breakfast foods? And then also, how does breakfast work? Because, and I'm talking about, because I only know about elementary. My granddaughter had this huge bill that I kept putting in, you know, I kept having to add money because I would get that $5 ding. And I'm like, how are you eating so much lunch? And then like eight weeks later, she goes, well, does breakfast count? I'm eating breakfast every day at school. And I'm like, well, you eat breakfast at home? So she was like, and it's lunch. And so, you know, we're paying $50 a week for food, it seems like. Anyway, so is breakfast on a cart outside the room and they just grab something and go in? And how is your breakfast, are you going to be doing breakfast?
The breakfast initiative, when I say lunch, it probably just happened that that's our bigger venture, but it's all, the whole recipe is lunch, breakfast, supper feeding will get pulled in that at some point as well. Each school has a little bit different breakfast in the classroom model. Some of them go through the serving lines, use the point-of-sales machine, key in their number, just like lunch and go right on through. Some of them have- Some of them have a card with their number and an envelope, and if they want breakfast from the carts in the hall, they take the card down and give it to the cafeteria worker, the assistant, they take the card and then take it back to the cash register. They plug it in after everybody's been fed. So there's, there's a couple of different models.
And breakfast is available for anybody and everybody?
Same time.
Yeah, same thing as, yeah. I learned that. I learned all about breakfast.
Mrs. Manning? I really love to hear that food waste has been reduced. Is that something that you're actually measuring, and do you have any numbers that you can give us?
I did not bring any of that with me. It was part of what ODS was working with, the chefs over there, the consultants. Part of our problem is a lot of the mandates that USDA puts in. They force us to have a certain color vegetable on a certain day. You know, it's to that level. And sometimes it's hard to get those things in and what they want. And the fact that they have to take all those has forced some of the waste. That's part of the chef's brilliance, he's able to, he likes to say hide the veggies. He has unique ways of taking those and mixing them into sauces and things like that so we get our vegetable counts in.
Yeah.
That's not my forte. I'm more of a number sales kind of guy. He's the creative guy, but.
And we're finding a lot of fun ways to do that. I mean, like right now, we're testing mac and cheese that has cauliflower like in the cheese. And, you know, I've, I've allowed my cooks to try it, you know, because that's something like I'm working on the side, and they're like, this is great, how are you doing it? There's like, you know, fat content. Nope, it's cauliflower. So we're sneaking things in. We got our marinara at ODS right now that has zucchini and carrots in it.
Oh, brownies with carrots.
The carrots are our sweeteners, you know, they're natural sweeteners. So it's really fun, and like I said, like with these kids' involvement, you know, we can see what they are, you know, really liking to do, and we're going to, you know, just keep adding to it.
In that, I'm not trying to be vague on answering that question, but every menu was a little bit different. On some days, the base was identical, on some days it was a little more, on some days it was a little less. And, you know, I, I do think it reduced it overall because they were conscious of it. It does take the manpower to kind of monitor and have everything out there, but that was one of the reasons we got into that pilot, was not just the scratch cooking, but the zero waste. So we're looking forward to that. And again, that's a component we're going to add in, but I try to do the big picture because it's so time-consuming to get everything out there, is get our recipes developed, tested with the kids, get them out in the field, and start rolling out to schools. And then we've got multiple layers we plan on adding to this. That's one of.
Thank you. Mrs. Malnick?
Well, I'm sitting here just shaking my head in utter amazement at this whole thing. This is, this is truly remarkable, and this division, every day, impresses me the innovative things that we do. But then to hear this today, I mean, this is just so remarkably over the top. This is really wonderful. Thank you.
Well, we appreciate that, but it's, it's been a team effort from the top down, and Dr. Spence had a big hand in pushing principles and breakfast in the classroom model, you know, to get those extra meals. We're a penny business, and so every little meal we can get is just added. You saw those results over the last three years, the fund balance has really been able to, to develop to a position now. We're lucky, we could afford to do some of these things, and five years ago, we were just trying to get to the next school year.
But to get kids to eat like this when they're going to, they eat the chicken nuggets, right? But to do what you're doing is, is remarkable.
Thank you.
I love it. Mrs. Felton?
Mr. Smith, you mentioned, and I'd just like to say, you were sort of, when you talked with me earlier about all we're doing is cooking, but listening to the students, they are getting collaboration and knowledge and skill sets, team, and all this is going to play, and I like that about that. And then their peers, they're leading their peers in doing the right things. How often do we get other peers to do that, leading to doing the right thing? But also, you mentioned the summer meals. How does that mimic this program, and does it mimic at all?
It's one of those things that we're going to get to. Again, it's, you got to start here.
Exactly.
And get to that, and start building the layers on. The summer feeding, it's a new venture. We're only really three years into it, and if you'd asked me three years ago what I thought was going to happen with summer feeding, I would, probably nothing. And it has just really taken off, and we got into it to provide our, our workers opportunities to get more money.
Okay.
And then with all the teaching and learning programs that we're going on in schools to be able to support those, and the Title I programs, and the real trade-off is we've got Park and Rec that's in all those schools, and they're doing half our work. They're out there helping us serve the meals and getting them out there to help, it's helping them advertise their program. So it's been a real win-win, and, you know, last year, we ventured out of high schools and the middle schools for the first time. And it's, it's just, it's a just all-around solid plan, and as the menus evolve and the staffs get used to that kind of cooking, you'll see it in everything we do.
Great. As a commissioner for park recreation, I was waiting for you to mention it as well. But really, is it, is it a three-tier for summer? Is it just breakfast and lunch, or just lunch for?
Well, it really depends. If the school zone, the intended zone for that school is over 50%, then every student that's in that program, regardless of what they're doing, can eat for free.
Thank you.
If they're, if they're not, if they're 45%, then it has to defer back to the regular breakfast and lunch program, and it's based on their individual status.
Thank you.
I just want to say, I visited John B. Dye Elementary last week, and they have a brand-new cafeteria, but there, I happened to see what she was, what she was planning on serving for lunch, and I mentioned the scratch cooking, and she says, oh, that's exactly what I did today. And when she saw, when she showed it to me, I took pictures of it and put it on Facebook. I was going, this is the scratch cooking, this is it, this is what we're doing. It was awesome. I can't, I really wanted to stay and have lunch that day, but I had another meeting to get to, so it was, it was pretty cool. I don't know if she's one of your cooks that's volunteered or not, but I think she's, she's going to be volunteering if she's not already.
She's one of those. We have several that have a lot of culinary experience, and it just, it hasn't been able to blossom, and now it's starting to come out.
Right, right. So I remember the days when, when, when we would arrive at school and the rolls were already cooking, and you smelled them before you got out of your car in the parking lot. So.
I think that's what everyone, like, wants to hear and wants to smell, is those rolls.
Right.
The first thing I, the first words out of my mouth is, I want biscuits.
Yeah. And the first thing I started cooking was biscuits. And I was like, is this realistic to do for 1,500 people every day? And I was like, maybe I should focus on some other summer now, but we're going to get, we will get that smell in.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate your, very informative.
Feel free to email me anytime if you have anything.
Okay.
Thank you. That was great.
All right. Moving on to our next workshop.
Yeah, thanks again.
Thank you.
It's awesome.
Budgeting.
Mr. Hansiger. Mr. Hansiger.
Seems like somehow we should make it that you could control that from over there. Get more steps, that's it.
Good afternoon. I'm Cameron Anderson of Lashir McDonald's. I'm a member of the community. I don't have any creative things today.
Scratch budgeting.
Same old, same old, I don't know.
How are we going to do this?
Okay. I really do have good news to share with you.
Yay.
And I'm going to take you through the reversion resolution and the information that we have as our fiscal year ended, June of this year. And so let me just go right into that, and then I want to give you some details that might not be in here, and I'll share that as we go along. But if we can get this to work. All right. this first one is the athletic fund reversion. We have several different funds. The athletic fund is one. So these are revenues that, that revert. A hundred thousand, fifty-five, a hundred and fifty-five, $100,055 is green run fund that reverted. The largest reversion we have is in the operating budget, and you can see it's the $22,334,199. That, let me back up, that totals $22,881,964. We, in the revenue sharing agreement, have an agreement that says if the revenue sharing revenues in the revenue sharing agreement for schools exceeds the budget, the schools get that amount of money. If the revenue sharing streams of income in the revenue sharing agreement comes in less than the budget, at, after you're enclosed, we have to give that money back to the city. So this is a positive number for us. That's $1,535,000. We had no idea that we would be getting that. So total available for reappraisal is $24,417,731. That's a little bit more than we've had in the last few years, but it's primarily the reason, the reason for that is 2.7 million of that was debt service funds that we did not have to pay. Because the city did not sell one of the, one of the bonds that they had planned on selling, so that freed up 2.7 million that we actually didn't know that we were not going to have to pay. And of course, the $1,535,000, that's unpredictable. We, we don't have the city's books. They close out their books, and they close out all of those revenue streams in the revenue sharing formula. So the good news is we've got $24.4 million that's to be reappropriated. We've come up with a spending plan, and I'm going to share that with you now, and hopefully you'll appreciate and understand why we're recommending these, these particular ones. As you know, we built $6,800,000 into the current year budget so that we could balance it. When we're doing the five-year forecast for the next year, there's a possibility that we could have a, a revenue shortfall. So I want to go ahead, and Dr. Spence and I talked about, we want to go ahead and protect the $6.8 million that we've got in this year, just in case we need it to balance next year's budget. You have a cumulative column there that will give you a running total of how much money we have available of that 24 million. So we're down to 17,606. We want to put back $205,000 into the athletic fund. They have some needs for some equipment and materials and things that they have needs for. We also have, in the current year, about a $2 million deficit in the risk management fund, and so we're going to have to cover that this year. So we're asking for that to be reappraparated. Part of that, or the primary reason that, that we have that deficit is we had a significant number of property damage in the tornado, Landstown, the residual of tropical hurricane winds and rain. So we, this is one of the years that we took some pretty heavy casualty claims with regard to buildings and other things that we cover in the risk management fund. We have a CIP project that we want to go ahead, since we have the 24 million, we want to go ahead and appropriate what we need to do the office annex addition at Plaza Annex, and that's a total of $6,980,000. That will enable us to move the staff from Laskin Road to Plaza Annex. That's a two-year project. Tony, am I correct? Two-year project. We also have another CIP project. In the retreat, we talked to you, and you've indicated a priority for us would be to eventually build out all the softball, baseball lights at the, at the high schools. This proposal will do four of the high schools. It's $2.8 million, and I think that leaves us two more fields to do. So we're almost finished once we finish this. Normally, we, you'll see replacement school buses. We still have that need. We still haven't quite reached 50 replacement buses in the base budget yet. We'll probably have two more years before we, we reach that. So this will buy us around 20, 20 buses.
I was writing everything down, sorry.
Our white fleet has a lot of vehicles that are just basically used up. They, many of them have way, way high mileage. Some of them are very expensive to maintain, so this provides some additional funds to, to replace some of those that are in the worst condition. Interactive whiteboards are going to be one of those long-term projects. We've got a, whiteboards that have been in place, some of them since 2006, 2007. We bought a lot of whiteboards back when the recession started, and we use stimulus money. Remember, we use stimulus money for one-time things? This, this is one of the one-time things we've done. Many of those whiteboards are becoming, you can't replace the projectors anymore in some cases. You can't replace the whiteboards. A lot of them you can. So as long as we can continue to replace these things, we will. But we've probably got an $18 million need over the next few years to replace whiteboards. This will be a good start for that. You've received the Blue Ribbon Committee's reports on school safety. We've got to start implementing that plan. We can set aside a million dollars of the reversion monies for things like cameras, updated computers, fencing, repositioning the security kiosks in front of the entry to the building. And there are other things that came out of that report, and there are things that we're really not going to talk about that we need to do. So that's a good start, and we'll see how far that goes. And that leaves the $382,731. We're proposing to go ahead and buy, Daniel, is that about 20 classrooms?
Yes, sir.
About 20 classrooms of new and flexible furniture for Princess Anne High School. When we build Princess Anne, when we, when that school is rebuilt or newly built, obviously we would be buying new furniture. These types of furniture that we're talking about, we won't have to buy as much when we move into the new school. So that's the spending plan for the reversion funds. Over the years, going back about 11 years, I had the staff, we trunched the numbers, our reversions have averaged just right around 2%. And if you can imagine 2% in the huge, multi-hundred-million-dollar budgets that we, that we operate is, you know, if we miss about 1%, you know, that's eight, nine, 10 million dollars. It's not a lot of money. It's not a lot of money when you think of the total amount, uh, of the budget that we're responsible for. The city's been really, really good at projecting what local revenues are gonna be. Obviously, they, they're off every now and then. The state, uh, the governor's staff and the legislature staff do a really good job of predicting what state revenues are gonna be. So, we're fortunate, we live in Virginia, we've got a state that does, and they're, they're fairly conservative, uh, when they, uh, project these numbers. And, uh, so, we feel pretty confident that, you know, running a, uh, a, uh, reversion of around two percent is, is not too bad, it's not too uncomfortable. If it gets a lot lower than that, I'm gonna have a lot more sleepless nights. But, I've got a fantastic staff that works with me every day, uh, with Crystal and her folks in business services and, and the budget coordinators and analysts that work with me in the budget. We work really close with the city staff, um, basically on an ongoing, daily, weekly, monthly basis. So, um, this is our spending plan. Uh, now, Chairman, I'm happy to answer any questions. I, I would ask if you would consider, um, this is on the information part of the board agenda. If the board is comfortable with our spending plan, uh, if you would consider moving it to action, it allows us to go ahead and, and send this on to the city and we can go ahead and begin, um, this implementation of the spending plan, uh, much sooner.
Mrs. McLeod?
Thank you. Um, Mr. Hansiger, can you remind us, risk management, I remember that was a fun topic about six, six years ago and we built animal shelters and things. But, anyway, um, the question, what are we required to have? Because I, I, going back to that scenario, the city I thought was covering more of that. So, what are we required as a school system to have in our risk management fund?
Well, if, if there's no specific requirement, if there's no standard, there's no set ratio out of the risk management fund, we pay for workers' comp. We pay for all of the board's errors and omissions insurance. We pay for, uh, all the property insurance. We pay for all the vehicle insurance. Uh, we pay for all the risk management claims that we have, including workers' comp claims. So, there are a multitude of things that we have to cover. So, so to answer your question, we have to cover all of those, whatever those costs are. The city, if you go back years ago when they got money from us, we had about eighteen million dollars in the risk management fund. And when they took that, they basically implied that they would be our risk management pool.
And?
Well, they're not, because we talked to them about this two-million-dollar deficit and they said we should go back into whatever reversion funds we have and cover, uh, the deficit. So, that's, that's what we're, we're having to do. It, what that means is, next year, I'll probably have to build an additional two-million dollars into the base budget to make sure we can cover risk management costs over the following year.
So, we may need to remind our friends over in city council how this worked a few years ago.
The number of them is still not there and...
Okay, I'm happy to make phone calls.
Mrs. Weems?
I have some more furniture, a question about furniture. And, so, um, Mr. Kiefer, do, does Princess Anne High School need to replace, do they have, like, need furniture right now? Um, and they would be buying furniture anyway? Or is this just being proactive towards, or the new, what they would like to be using? Are we gonna throw some furniture away to have new furniture? That's what I'm basically asking.
I don't think we're gonna throw furniture away. I, I, I think that Princess Anne is our oldest high school in Virginia Beach, is in need of some new and flexible furniture. And this is a request that staff members there have made, it's a request the principal's made. And I think it is a, a good faith effort on our part to help them begin some of the modernization work.
Okay.
Things will not be thrown away, I mean, we...
That's, that's what, I just didn't wanna go and get rid of something that was usable, knowing we're going to build them a brand-new school and they're gonna have it, even though I realize it could be a good five or six years down the road kind of thing. So, I'm just trying to, 'cause to be honest, I would take that three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars and say, let's go and, and put that into, you know, additional buses or something like that, if, if that's the case. But, okay, thank you. That's all.
Uh, Mrs. Weems?
I had that same question, it just kinda seemed random. And then Ms. Anderson knows what I'm gonna talk about next. But, let me preface this by saying, I love baseball, I love softball, I love the night. Um, these sports help pay for, for my education, my husband's and a couple of my kids. So, I love sports and I love night games. However, um, it just seems that, and, and I brought this up to my colleagues before. The lights are connected to playing night games. Right now, we don't need to play night games because of the time our high schools get out. We are going to have that conversation, 'cause we have a committee. I think Kim and I are on that committee, time changes for schools, you know, but I haven't, I don't think we've met or I haven't heard that we met, but we're gonna be having that conversation. That conversation needs to have so much community input, whether you're gonna start high schools later and change middle school and elementary school. So, buying lights is connected to that. So, I'm seeing this, that we're buying lights, but we haven't made a decision. So, when we make the decision in one or two or three years, I don't know when, if the decision is, we keep it like it is, then we have spent millions of dollars on lights that might get used some, but, some, but we didn't really need them. If we decide that we're going to change, then we already had the lights. But, it seems like now, we're, we're making this financial, financial decision before that we've got community input. And to me, it's like, okay, we're gonna buy these lights, then we're gonna have the conversation, then we're gonna be able to say, I don't agree with it, we have all these lights for these fields. Of course, we have to change times, we don't wanna be fiscally, you know, irresponsible. We bought these lights and we need to change times to, to go along with our nine-million-dollar investment. So, so that, to me, is not a need at all to put lights on. And, you know, and Farrell and I, and this is not pointing at you, because you do what the board says. I don't remember having a formal vote, ever. I remember discussing that you need lights in order to play baseball at night, if we change times. But, to me, I would rather put that money in just a multitude of things, you know, whiteboards, bonuses, you know, all, you know, the thing that, that, um, my colleague Vicki, I mean, Ashley said. So, I, I just, I'm not gonna support putting lights before that we've had a decision if we need them. I just think it's irresponsible, I think it's a want, I don't think it's a need. And I'm probably the most pro-sport person sitting here at this table.
Yeah, so, so let me speak to that, because we're, um, I guess we're remembering things, different conversation. So, the reason that's in there is because it was our impression, my impression and the impression of senior staff that our marching orders, after our conversation at a retreat where we talked extensively about high school start times, was the thing that stopped that conversation in its tracks was the cost of lights. And we understood, I understood very clearly, following that conversation, a, as a part of that conversation, that we were to start figuring out a way to get the fields lit so we could bring the conversation back to the board to then talk about high school start times. We did have a pretty extensive dialogue within the community about high school start times. You know, Kiefer led that conversation, uh, with our principals, students, parents. We got a lot of feedback, shared it at a retreat. Um, and there was some support, a lot of support, I think, for, for changing the start times. But, where we came cold was when we put the price tag on for, in order to accomplish that, we would need to light our fields. So, so this was in response to that.
Yeah, and it's not to you and it's not to you. I just said, my colleagues, can we revisit that? And it, and if y'all say lights are more important than whiteboards or teacher bonuses or anything else. I mean, well, you are saying that, 'cause that's what you say when you vote for a budget. When, when you put this money, you are saying it and that's fine. But, I just don't re, I, I wanna hear it from my colleagues. And again, you, you did what you...
Yeah, we would, yeah, we would just like some clarity and direction on that.
Yes, I want clarity, because I do not support paying for lights for our baseball and softball fields.
Hi, Ms. Man, Ms. Manning?
Um, I reiterate what Ms. Weems said. I think that we need to have a conversation about start time changes if we're gonna be spending millions of dollars on lights. Um, and the way I took our retreat was that we do need to figure out how to light the fields if we're gonna change start times. That has to be together in one. I don't think that meant, let's spend the money on the lights and then make the decision. I feel very strongly that we need to make a decision one way or another before we go ahead with lighting all of our fields. So, I would support spending that money elsewhere.
Mr. Edwards?
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't want to cut you off, but...
And then I just had a, a question, if you could clarify the whiteboards. Um, we took a tour of some facilities and I thought that we were moving away from whiteboards.
We are, yes ma'am, thank you for asking that. Yeah, uh, our plan is as those boards are being replaced, rather than replacing those boards themselves, we're replacing them with panels.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, so that, these dollars would be towards replacement of whiteboards with panels.
Oh, okay, great, okay. So, we're not buying new white, whiteboards or teachers. Okay, great.
Mr. Edwards? I'm sorry, I'm trying to move, move us along, looking at the time here, so, sorry.
The, uh, yeah, I, I was gonna talk to the lights, but, but we need to. We were in a position a year and a half ago, fifteen months ago, where we felt like we could not proceed without a plan to do the lights. And we said, let's do a plan to nibble away. I, I guess maybe we didn't have a sense for how big those nibble bites were gonna be. I think the bite this year is, is a function of the size of the reversion. Um, right now, we've got four, five schools that have lights and some that don't. And we've got haves and have-nots. And if we never, if we don't continue to execute the nibble plan, we will never be in a position to move forward and make that decision. I mean, I think the board is, I read us collectively a year and a half ago, was, yeah, it's really the right thing to do. We need to move ahead and the, and allow the community to tweak the plan in which we move. But, it's the right thing to do. I'm not a huge advocate of it for a lot of, because of my zealous attitude towards after-school activities. But, I do know where we were fifteen months ago. And I was quite willing to go along with that, because from a sleep standpoint and all this other stuff, this is not about, this two-million-eight is not about lights. It's about, do we ever change our start times? And if we don't do that, whether it be two-point-eight this year, one-point-four this year, you know, if we never do that, it's either that or we don't functionally have a realistically viable softball and baseball program at the, at the schools. I mean, that was the picture, are we gonna, okay, we could do the, um, we could do the start time thing, um, without the lights, except it, it pretty much makes the, those baseball and softball programs very, very difficult to the point where they're not very functional. So, that was why we were where we were fifteen months ago. I mean, I, that's not why I'd initially raised my hand, but obviously, the discussion of the lights, I felt like I needed to clarify where I read us collectively back then. Um, my other, you know, I had my hand up mostly on the risk management thing, which has been covered, um, not happy. But, you know, all in all, the support from our schools, from the council is, is, uh, been, been decent. And I think we've got a good relationship. And I, I don't know that there's a lot to be gained by revisiting that, other than internally. Uh, so, I would not suggest we can launch any, you know, we were all mad as heck back then, but I don't see any need to regenerate that angle. Um, this list, I mean, we could, we've all got hot buttons and things we'd like to probably see moved around and stuff. But, um, this is the collective wisdom of, of senior leadership having read the needs and wants of, for one-time expenditures for the division, is that correct?
Correct.
So, that's why, I mean, we can, we can second-guess and wanna insert and drop and move around. Um, but, uh, I, I do put a lot of stock in the, in the efforts of senior staff to try to get us a good, a priority list for one-time things. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Rye? And let's all please be mindful of the time. We have another workshop we're supposed to get to this evening as well.
I, I was gonna bring up the have-have-not point that Dan made. But, I had the opportunity recently to go back to that folder, because I, just in the last month, had four or five different parents approach me with the question of where we stand with all this. And so, I looked through the, we had a hard copy of the survey, we did survey the community. And the results were that three-quarters of the parents were in favor of a start time switch. Now, it wasn't as high among the students. And so, that's what generated the discussion. And we had, with all the choices that were made, and again, this is all my notes in the folder and the handout, the best option we all saw was flipping elementary and high school. And then we got caught with this. And it was about the same time we were passing policy language, 'cause Ashley and I were working on that, about naming rights, you know, and in an ideal world, somebody might've stepped up in the meantime to pay for some lighting. But, I mean...
We didn't do anything, I just asked on.
But, um, so again, I wanna reiterate that we did survey the community already and that's what largely drove that retreat discussion.
Okay, um, Mr. Hansiger?
I, I just, it wouldn't be fair for me to leave the risk management subject, um, without disclosing this. Because a number of years have cha, have gone by since we had that historical thing.
But, some of us haven't forgotten.
City staff that, that does their finances. The city has a, a deficit in their risk management fund, it's almost, I think it's approaching twenty million dollars. And I think the way they're dealing with that is the way that we're dealing with it. They're using some of their, um, reversion monies to cover some of those deficits. So, the, they have an issue too with not fully funding their risk management fund.
Okay, all right, Mrs. Ricks?
Uh, I just wanted to say, I do remember, we, we did an extensive survey and Daniel Kiefer, uh, shared it with us. And it was exactly what, um, Ms. Rice saw. So, to, to revisit that again, I think we've got our, um, responses from our citizens, our parents, uh, community. And we did talk about in, in our, um, retreat, that we could move forward with that when we started getting the lights in, uh, on the fields. So, that was discussed. I know it was discussed, it was not voted on. But, we decided to do that.
No.
So, uh, well, we said to move forward and asked our, we asked the administration to move forward with that and see what they could do with it. So...
Mrs. McLeod?
Um, I have, um, two things. One, we, after that discussion, we got the policy change so that we could go and try to go and find it. And, and I, I just was having a side conversation with Dr. Robertson. And I, I have dropped the ball on this too, 'cause it's something I felt very strongly about. I think that unfortunately, we have not done that, that's there, and we haven't looked at that as an opportunity. So, um, one of the things we might consider is that maybe we do two baseball lights, but then we go and, we go a little further to go and try to, really try to reach out to the community and find out if we can get sponsorships for the fields. Because we, as a group, changed that policy for that reason and then we didn't do, did we do that? So, that, and I, um, so we need to define by us having done that, is it the school's responsibility before? Is it Dr. Robertson and I? Is it, you know, who is it that is, can put that plan together to go and do that kind of a capital campaign type of thing where we, where we go towards that? And so, I want, and this is in, you know, honor of M. Davis. One of the things she hated leaving the board and not getting finished was to switch the school times. That was something very important to her, 'cause she truly believed in it. And I would love to know that, you know, that we were putting things in place to actually get that accomplished. Um, and if, and this is what I do remember from that conversation, is this is why we didn't. And I was one of the ones that says, until this happens, we can't, you know? And I agree with that. And so, um, um, but I just thought I might throw that as a compromise, that we consider the amount, doing possibly two schools. But, then we have to make the commitment. If you're not willing to make the commitment to go and actively put a program together that can go out and reach out to the community and find out if we have the sponsorship and the interest in going and having, you know, Ashley McLeod Baseball Field, 'cause I love baseball, over at Landstown High School, you know, kind of thing, and give two million dollars for that. Um, those kind of things are company, to get the point. But, we have to make, if we're not going to make the commitment to do that and to follow through with it, then I think we need to go for it as it is. But, if we'd like to approach that, my compromise... But if we'd like to approach that, my compromise would be to, "Let's do two this year, and then let's try to work on raising the rest." So, there you go.
I just wanna say, um, that I, I remember the, the workshop as well, in our retreat, where we talked about, um, the survey that we did with the parents and the students. And, and we really did leave, not with a formal vote, but with a consensus that day that we wanted to move forward. But we actually came, I think all of us did an, "What? It's gonna cost eight million dollars to do these lights?" We absolutely came to abrupt standstill on that issue, and to, and, and we all said at that workshop, um, that day, uh, at that retreat, that we couldn't go further with that until we took care of the lights issue. And so I think what we're trying to do right now is address that issue. And that was the message that we left with, with our staff. The consensus of the board that day was that we wanted to move forward, when we could afford it, to get lights. So, you know, ever how, which way we get to it, we need to get the lights, or we can't revisit even moving the, the start times at all. Back to Mrs. Weems.
So if I'm understanding this, then there really doesn't need to be a committee of change times, 'cause we've actually already decided to change times. I mean, that's what it sounds like. Is that true? I mean, why, why, if we've already vote, I mean, you know, 'cause this is connected to that, so I'm confused about that. And I have to remind my, my colleagues too, we've done things that we voted on, but it's taken five years to implement kindergarten. We revisited it how many times since I've been on the board? So it's okay to revisit things. It's okay to vote on something and wait to implement it. So why can't we actually figure out again, and, and, excuse, I need to go over the data, 'cause I'm not sure how many, how many, um, parents we had to survey. Or what was the survey, Mr. Kiefer, do you not remember?
I, I can pull that information up. Seventy percent was the.
No, no, how many people surveyed? Like, ten percent of people surveyed, answered the survey, twenty percent?
Let me, let me pull that up.
Okay. And so, while you pull it up, and so, so to me, if we, if we have this committee to look at start times, if we say that the board decides, you know, by six, to change start times, it doesn't mean it has to be implemented in six months. It can be implemented in two years, like we did kindergarten, like we did balance out. You know, we, we've done a lot of votes where you give time to change. So in that two or four years, we could actually buy the lights or get sponsorship of the lights. So I, I would just like to vote on, at first, do it in, uh, the order that it's supposed to be done in.
Yeah, you know.
And so if we, if we don't need any more input, then I don't know why. I think Kim and I are on the start, the change committee.
Honestly, I don't know what committee we're, I'd have to go back and check the minutes on that.
We, we actually disbanded that committee.
'Cause we, so we're not, we're not planning on getting any more input.
No, it's not that. It's just that we can't talk about it, or even go for, forward anywhere with any of it, until we have.
Well, we didn't have the money for kindergarten, and we did it. That's what I'm saying, you vote for that, and then you decide how you're gonna.
So we could vote for it, and then ask the city council to fund it all.
No, oh, no.
That's what we're asked, we asked for kindergarten. Okay, so, so this is a start on getting it. I'm not gonna argue with you about it, but Dr. Spence, would you like to speak to this? And then, we, we really do need to move on. Uh, we have one more workshop to try to get in, if we can, possibly.
I, I mean, I think the short version, from the administrative perspective, is we put, we, we did put some legwork into that conversation with the board. And, um, it was, it was my clear sense, walking away from that meeting, that you all wanted us to begin figuring out a way to get the fields lit, so that we could come back and have this conversation. And that, that, and, and not that what you're saying now doesn't make sense, but at that time, the direction we had was get the field lit, so we can come back and have this conversation. We can't have this conversation without lit fields. And so we have been working on lighting fields. Green Run is, is right as we speak, finishing up their softball field lights and running those tests. We are, uh, down to seven and a half schools without their fields lit. And so this would get us to three and a half. There are interesting sponsorship opportunities for other things. There are a lot of conversations happening now about turf fields, for example. And so there's a lot of, of opportunity to have those conversations. I think our perspective would be with the money available. We were trying to attempt to accomplish what the board directed us to accomplish. This is just an, an example of, we get direction, and then we get that direction moved, and that's okay. I just need to know where to go with this. That's, but, but to explain, that's why it's in the plan.
Right, I knew, that's what, I said at first, I don't, I'm not saying that, that to you. I know you did, and you did what you were supposed to do.
No, I understand that, and I'm not, it isn't.
But I just, I, I want clarity, I wanna make a decision, and then figure out, like we do with kindergarten, you make a decision, and you fund it. You know?
Mrs. Rye?
Really quick question, I was gonna ask Dr. Spence, going back to, um, conversation I had and Ashley. What, what, how would you envision going out a serious effort? You know, to pay for two now, and a ser, what, what, what would it look like, a serious effort for two more fields to get lit?
Well, the Hanley High School's a perfect example of going and raising the funds from within a community. There are people that do this out in the state, and that's how, and so it would actually be less time on our staff and things like that, to go and look into some things like that.
Certainly. I mean, there are people who run capital campaigns, and we could look at something like that. If that's, if that's what the board wants to do, if the board wants to get into running capital campaigns to seek sponsorship for its fields and field lights, I think we can do that. We've not had the sense that that was the direction. I know the policy opened itself up, the folks approached us and wanted to have that conversation, we could. We have not, I have not in the past gone, you know, gone down that road. But it's certainly something if the board wants me to do, I'm happy to, to lead that effort.
Russ Potts out in Winchester would be the perfect person, and Zach.
Sure, I mean, this happens, look, and, and, when I was in Houston, we did do some of this. So, I mean, it's, you know, in Texas, everybody gets their field's name.
Exactly. And the Friday night lights.
But it's a little unusual in Virginia, and, and it's okay, but it would be new for our community. It's something we could do, if that's the direction the board wants us to go. And our thought process was, we could knock out four fields with some of these reversion dollars, 'cause that's what we were under the impression we needed to do.
Okay. Mrs. Manning, and then I'm gonna close the debate on this for now. And, and then we will talk about whether we are going to be able to move this, uh, presentation to action. Still do the presentation in action, and then we would have discussion and vote this evening.
Let me answer one additional question. Eight thousand parents responded to the survey.
Eight thousand parents?
Yeah, so, just to give you that sense.
So that's about ten percent?
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't, were high, was high school excluded from the survey? Do you remember?
Was everybody?
Yeah. In total, about eight thousand parents, close to thirty-two hundred staff members responded. All middle school students, and, excuse me, ten thousand middle school students and ten thousand high school.
I would say one per family, I wouldn't count any of the most kids.
High school parents are included, are.
So think of that that way. I'm sorry, I was, yeah. You think, think of this, you have, you can't, you don't have, to both parents didn't have to respond. So it's one per child, and there are multiple children. I have two children, so if you look at it that way, that's not a bad response.
No, I think, I think our, uh, I think our PIA team would call that a good response.
Yeah, it's not, so it's a ten percent response? Like, for, were there just the parents? Yeah, or eight, or, okay, that's fine, that's fine, I'll look at it later then.
Mrs. Manning?
So I would like to ask the board to have a vote on changing start time before we spend any more money on lights. I, I'm not saying I'm opposed to it. But I, I think it's wrong to spend money on something that might not happen. We could get six months from now, and the board vote to not change start times. And I think that that would be wasting taxpayer dollars on lights that may not get used. So I would like the board to consider that.
Would you like a straw poll on that now, or a formal vote?
I'd like to have a formal vote on whether or not we're gonna change start times. Straw poll is non-binding.
Neither, neither is a formal vote binding.
Yeah, that's exactly.
So we, I mean, we would have to add that to an agenda item, I believe, and, um, which would then, of course, require information and action. So Farrell, in terms of the delay for the reversion funds, it's a couple months at least, right? Because once we vote on reversion funds, then we're having a conversation with the city, and they have to accept the resolution and vote on that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanna make the timing clear. And it's okay, but there are some, some timing issues with regards to when we get access to these funds. Just wanna make sure everybody has that information.
So what we had asked was to be able to move, uh, to amend the agenda and change, um, allow Farrell to do this presentation that he did tonight, um, on action, instead of information. And then we would have a discussion and vote tonight, whether to move these reversion funds. And so that we could send that resolution on to city council, correct? This would speed up the timeline a little bit, allow us to be able to utilize these funds. So.
Madam Char, I, I think the, the issue is, we can't do that as it is, if we're planning a formal vote prior to additional funding for fields.
Mrs. Edwards? Could, could we approve this? And then ha, have, we can always, we, we don't have to execute that, those lights in the next three months. We, we can, we can pass this, and then change that later and still do it. I, I'd like to get the, mo, I'd like to get the, the process with the city in motion. But I, I know in terms of execution, you could go.
We could amend the resolution.
Yeah, slow, and then amend that, and, and allow, 'cause I, I, I absolutely agree with Mrs. Manning. I wanna get a vote out here and, and get ourselves on record. We, we were on consensus sort of, yes, we wanna do it, but not a vote, and it's a good idea. So let's, let's, let's do that. But in the meantime, I'd like to see us move ahead tonight, with the understanding that we'll go slow on the, uh.
We'll just put a hold, we won't do any engineering or architecture, anything for the lights, until that happens.
So.
Is that, is that agreeable to everyone? So then we still would move forward with putting this on action tonight? With the understanding that, can we have that ready by the next meeting?
It's an agenda, and we can add it to the agenda.
At what, on the agenda?
A vote on, um, whether we're gonna do start.
Don't we need to put that up for information?
We would put it up for information, of course, yes.
I don't think we should vote on it any sooner. The information on the twenty-third.
Correct.
Allow for public input. And so we would vote no earlier than November the thirteenth.
Correct.
Start time.
I think we, you know, with that data that we had before, and all this stuff, needs to get back out to the community.
Yeah. This is a big deal for a lot of people.
It is, it is.
And it's.
But we've actually, actually had, I don't know if you all have received it, but I've received several, uh, emails asking, "What is the problem with us? We know that, uh, medical advice tells us to do it. What's wrong, and why we haven't, why haven't we done it?" And so, it's embarrassing to say, well, the reason we haven't done it is because we can't really move forward on this until we have lights, so.
Just a point of clarification, the language that we would be placing on action tonight would include the funding for the lights?
Yeah.
Okay. With the understanding that we could amend it, and I'm sure we have to send it back to city council. Cammy, is that correct? If we amended our, if we changed what the, okay, if we changed the spending, then we would have to send it back to city council to explain what we were spending on, instead of.
I'm not sure about that.
Yeah, once it's reverted back to us.
Yeah, I think, I think one's.
If it, if it crosses categories, we might have to, something.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
They'll figure it out. So can we put in, if we move this to action, can we put in it that we will, that we will be revisiting the topic on the lights? Is, is there a way to put that wording in there?
What if, what if we?
That's not a city concern.
What if you change it, just put it, um, Mark's suggesting, which may be a good idea, is facilities improvements, don't necessarily specify it for lights. And then you can decide what you wanna do with it specifically.
Big boys, cobalt mixers and those.
Could be.
Which is a good place for one-time money, anyway.
Well, I think that's a good place to put it. It, it, can we revise the, the resolution for that?
We can call facilities improvement. Right.
Facilities, that's a great idea, good idea.
Now, is that, is that agreeable to everyone? So, okay, it's agreeable then that we will move it to action for this evening, and you'll present under action, not under information this evening? Okay? With those adjustments.
You do both, right? You still have to present it for information.